All right, I'm gonna call the Acton Planning Board meeting to order on May 10th, 2021 at 6:06 PM. About the designated alternate, which is Vicky Pat Pearson. FYI, the town administrator is in place for, as a temporary land use secretary as for now until physicians get filled.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April 22nd.
Can we get a second? John, all in favor? All right, motion approved, the minutes, full business. I guess we'll start out order and go with Mr. Martinez. Iron Sales Route 559, Route 109, MAP 148, 001, conditional use application update. Second.
Okay. My email included a potential contract that I wanted to put in the board and sign it.
Greg, come up here.
Yeah, why don't you come up here, Greg? Sorry.
If you don't mind sitting next to me.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, good evening. My last email, I neglected unfortunately, as I indicated earlier, I neglected to email the potential contract between myself and a sound engineer company to help me to move forward with noise mitigation or however you want to describe it. I have identified and it's clearly visible now the back property line. I did, I did walk it, did drive it, and it's well marked, and I invite you all to make yourselves familiar with that going forward. So if you do in fact get complaints, you know exactly where to go to, to do any sound measuring. Going forward, my intent, if the board allows it, is to self-monitor currently as conditions exist today as well as after I finish construction of that sound wall and a few other, a few other items that I plan on putting in place. The knee wall, the sound wall just buffers between there and the property line. And during that period, you know, I intend to, you know, be within the ordinance. And the only way that I'll know whether I'm in the ordinance or not is by example. I have to operate to be able to see where I need to be and to adjust the sound accordingly. And then I would each time, you know, reach, you know, find a point there where I constantly maintain the noise and obviously speak with each of the bands, just like this is where we need to be and this is where we need to stay throughout your performance. My day shows is, you know, my main concern, which end at 5 o'clock on Saturdays and Sundays, live outdoor music is over. I was doing shows Friday evening, but I proposed that I do my Friday shows, Friday evening shows inside, so any time that I would have a performance outside beyond 5 o'clock would be via a mass gathering permit. And in this way, you know, it gives me an opportunity because I do have some big shows planned and, you know, some big, a couple of big names coming through. So I propose that I would get a massive gathering permits for those shows and then, you know, do, you know, do everything required that, that, that mass gathering permit requires as far as, you know, security, trash, all that stuff, which, which I've done before and I currently do, but all I can do is set an example and see what we can do and then move forward from there. You know, maybe eventually I may have to do some kind of a professional noise study, but at this point in time, I'm asking that the board allow me to self-police and also, you know, I can provide my sound meter or, you know, if anybody needs to take readings based on complaints and I, you know, I work closely with the sheriff's department regardless. And the, the property line can be viewed by you all, it's right, right next to Middle Road and go straight across the complainant's back fence, which I didn't know, I mean, right down the fence line. And then I, when I was on the property, I looked up through and it's kind of like a tunnel unfortunately, right down to the lake. So, you know, I certainly sympathize with the situation. You know, outside of that, outside of my music noise, they are on the lake and you have the boats and the, and the jet skis also. So it's kind of a double whammy for those folks if they're looking for complete quiet. I don't know if anybody has had their hands on a sound meter or did any readings for themselves, but I do have, you know, I did print up some examples, but you've probably all done that and, you know, just as far as the decibels go, it doesn't take much to violate the sound ordinance that's in place now at 50 decibels. Normal conversation and background music is 60. And at 60, I'm already, you know, normal conversation, I'm already over the noise ordinance. So that's why I propose that when I do these big shows that are after 5:00 PM, however complete and quiet by 10:00 PM, mind you, I would get a mass gathering permit that allows me that flexibility for the noise. And I don't know if I, I don't know if it's appropriate or if it's allowed, I'd have to obviously talk with the administrators of the local Facebook page, but I would put it on there, say, okay, this is a notice, this is what's going on in town here, just want to let you know, it's gonna be noisy. As part of, you know, as part of just notifying neighbors what, what they can expect for, you know, during those times that I would apply for the, for the mass gathering permit. But as far as my regular shows, you know, during the week, Saturdays and Sundays, today, my music runs from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM and at 5:00 PM, the outdoor live music is ended. And like I said, I ask you all to make yourself familiar with the property line so you know exactly where, where to go if, if come, if it becomes necessary to take a reading. And when you are, when you do go to the property line, if you're there on it, just take into consideration, you know, the decibel levels we spoke of and what to expect. Like I said, if normal speech is 60, there's a situation there.
Bless you.
Thank you.
That was 47. That was 47 decibels.
The steezer, Jim.
So Greg, you said your shows were gonna end at 10:00, all, all shows will end at 10:00?
Yes, yes. I generally close at 10:00 PM.
Okay.
And then when I do big shows, you know, I will see to it that they're, they're done at 10:00.
Greg, what is the number we've settled on now, are you settled on for the special larger concerts? To me, it seemed to move around. I think you originally came in for 10:00.
Right, yes.
And then it's down.
Well, I'm trying to, you know, trying to be reasonable and negotiate, you know, I, I'd like to do them often, but, you know, like I said, I'd like to have 10:00 and I say 10:00, it just depends on what I, what I am able to book and whatever makes sense for me, because for me to put on these performances costs a lot of money and I need to be able, I want to sell tickets at a reasonable price to cover the cost of the event. So, you know, it's all, it's all relative to that, but in the same token, I say 10:00, but it's very unlikely that I'm gonna do anywhere near that.
But, okay, so you did not amend your application for less than 10:00? I thought we had come in on a lower number.
I don't recall that.
I think originally you said 10:00.
Yes.
First meeting, we met you, then I think.
Yeah, that might be true, yeah.
Even the same meeting, I think we dropped it down to 5:00. You said originally 10:00 and we pushed it back to 5:00 for some reason it's sticking out ahead.
Well, I can, I can, I can live with 5:00. You know, that, you know, these are just an extra thing for my business, but it's not my, you know, it's not my bread and butter. You know, I don't, I don't intend to, you know, turn it to a, turn it into a concert venue, but I'd like to have some big shows and get some, you know, big name entertainers coming through once in a while.
I don't think that's under jurisdiction. Do you have bigger requests?
I would, I would have, no, that goes before the selectmen.
Yeah.
And I know there's, you know, there's stipulations, there's, there's different things that I have to, have to meet.
Right.
You know, I believe, you know, security, potential first aid onsite, things of that nature. Offsite, and I'm talking with some, some neighboring, some abutting properties about also offsite park, offsite parking, you know, because I potentially would need offsite parking, you know, keep people off the street, be it the fair grains, grounds, I haven't approached them, but I did talk to a neighboring property and he's considering it, but I would, obviously if it was the fair grounds or even the abutting, I would, they would be named insured under my policy, provide porta potties, trash removal, what have you. But like I said, that's, that's all within the mass gathering ordinance.
But I agree, I understand what you're saying, John, but the only thing we can consider, my understanding in the application is the outdoor music, that's what it's for. Anything else is just talk, a conversation. I mean, Greg could say, to make people happy, you know, I'm not gonna have four big events a year or five big events a year, but that would have nothing to do with us. Is that right, Ben?
Well, one of the things that you'll find in your places today is an email that I'd sent to the town administrator in regard to the noise standards in section 5 dot 11. That's on page 59 of the ordinance that talks about noise and specifically exemptions. There's a number of exemptions to the noise standards in the Acton ordinance. And in one of those, letter F, under exemptions, says noise created by recreational activities which are permitted by law and for which a license or permit has been granted by the town, including but not limited to parade, sport events, concerts, and fireworks displays. So there was some thinking in a specific request made, you know, would this type of use be considered a concert? And as such, would it be exempt from the standards for noise? I think that based on the nature of the outdoor music, occasional live outside music event seems to be a concert subject, you know, that would be exempt from the noise standard. And I think to Dennis's point, the idea of the normal types of use that would be going on in the, in the property would be subject to this amended site plan. And that's things like the character of the additional parking and seating, the addition of the retail use inside the existing building, and, and normal types of activities associated with the project. And as are represented here are the Friday evening shows and the Saturday and Sunday kinds of events. I think that the idea of those occasional larger events, subject to a mass gathering permit which is issued by the select board on a case-by-case basis would be an appropriate way to handle those kinds of things. But I think that what the board needs to be thinking about here is what would a normal week or normal weekend kind of activity, day in, day out, week in, week out, look like? I don't think it's really about those larger occasional events as much as the, the former situation where it's gonna be the, the regular ongoing types of activities, whether it's traffic, noise, stormwater impacts, those kinds of things. So I would recommend again, the approach of, only from an enforceability standpoint, I know that there is a court officer in the room who might also have some things to, to say about this, is that it is, from my perspective, difficult to measure accurately and especially in times when a court officer's available on weekends, later in the evening, those kinds of things, to accurately measure and make sure that violations are being caught and enforcement's having appropriately. It's much easier through a mechanism of a condition on the plan to say, to set the number of hours or days of operation for, for those kinds of outside events. So I think that's the direction I would encourage the board to, to think about, but from my perspective, I think those larger kind of one-off kinds of things are really beyond the scope of what the board should be looking at today and it's more about those week in and week out kind of activities.
Then it shouldn't be part of the application, right? The application that says, asks us to approve 10 or 5 or whatever the number is.
Right, so.
The application should be amended to just remove that and we'll deal with the, the normal business that Greg conducts.
And I think that that's, that's really where, where I'm going with this, is that it doesn't matter so much to the board because the board doesn't grant, the planning board doesn't grant mass gathering. So it's, it's really saying, what are these normal kind of impacts that someone could expect throughout the summer? And it's really up to the select board whether they want to grant 1, 3, 7, or 0 mass gathering permits.
Right. I only addressed it because it was in the application. I agree with everything you said.
Well, that's a, yeah, would be a procedural thing on my end because I just thought that it was appropriate to bring it before this board.
Sure. Gavin, when we did the dog rescue slash, minutes of dog slash ice cream shop, what was the time on that at night, 10:00? When they had to stop their noise, I guess?
Probably, I don't remember offhand, I'd have to look at that. That's when nighttime starts in the ordinance, so it makes sense that we would use that as our time.
And, so I guess where I'm going here is, and hopefully for the neighbors, the dog rescue won't be quite as loud as outdoor music, but having that timeframe for something like that. And, and Greg says he's not, he's gonna move the Friday night stuff inside and the Saturday and Sunday stuff be done by 5:00 in the afternoon. The decibel readings, and I know it's two different things they were talking about, but the decibel readings are the decibel readings. And this was never taken into consideration with the dog rescue, what the decibels would be putting under there, other than the dogs back and, you know, they had some kind of restrictions on that.
Did any abutters raise any issues, Dennis?
The only thing they were concerned about, they did. In fact, there's a question people, in fact.
There's more for the noise complaints, but for the dogs?
The dogs. They were concerned about the dogs back in at night and they were gonna put storm wool insulation in the dog buildings to help muffle the sound in case there was, so it wasn't so shot. And that was basically the big concern was the dogs, the dogs in the tree cutting. Concerns about the owls and bats and stuff like that. That was most of it, don't you think Gavin, that was most of it? So I, I've said all along that these decibel readings really need to be revisited and because I think they're unreasonable. You know, it's just, I don't see how you can, the tank, you know, of something like that, you know, you can't, a bunch of people out front eating is gonna exceed that. I mean, what's the excessive one that you're gonna allow? You know what I mean? If it says we only have 50 and you have 70, was it 50 and you got 80, where do you, where's the stock gap you put in? And where have you done this historically with any other outside businesses? I'm just throwing this out of the conversation. And maybe not in any conversation.
Well, unfortunately, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking to shoot myself in the foot, I'm looking to be honest. And unfortunately, these things with, with the growth that I've seen in the town here the last couple of years, I mean, there's gonna be a lot, you know, there's gonna be a lot more noise coming, coming the way to this community. You know, I live in Wells and it's, it's getting out of reach for a lot of folks that I know, so where's the next best place to go as far as I'm concerned? Is Acton, you know? And with growth comes additional noise, it comes road noise, it comes more commercial projects. We've already seen, seen some come in and I'm sure there's more to come. So that's why, you know, I don't know if any of you took the time to look through the proposal from that noise engineering company, there's a lot to it. And as much as I hate the price tag, it's the only, you know, fair way to do when, if and when we get to that, and I, I hate to say it, but I feel confident that I think eventually I'll have to do something of that nature. And it may not be too far away, it might be just a couple of years down the road as things develop around my location. And perhaps more complaints come in because they don't like what they hear. You know, living, I suppose living on a lake, just like living, you know, on any body of water, all of a sudden, you know, I live on train tracks, I don't hear the trains anymore. I don't hear them. You know, like folks living on the lakes, they don't hear the boat motors anymore. But when you introduce a new sound that they're not comfortable with, that they're not used to, then hey, we got noise here. You know, and that's why, you know, like they were, the engineering companies talking 72, 72-hour studies, you know, to, to measure what's the ambient noise, if you will, which is boats and cars and all that. And then when the music is introduced, how does it all work out in the fold? And, you know, it all comes with, with growth. And then all of a sudden, all kinds of very expensive people get faulted in every little project and we don't have the luxuries that we've, we've come to know thus far.
We have a lot of businesses in town, especially gravel businesses, we start at 6:00 in the morning and they start their crushers and their screens and their equipment and feed them down square pond, listen to the one up, the air on the, past the orchard, because it goes right down through that valley and, I don't know, I was listening to motorcycles the other night, over in New Hampshire, the old by Oak Hill, it just seemed like it went on for an hour and I was listening, trying to listen to the owls and stuff and it really aggravated me, but that's what, eight miles away. But again, it comes down through that valley. Uh-huh. I would, 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 and I'm, first I have to say, Greg, the last meeting, I said that I thought you should be back here. I said that right now, well, you're not right this minute, but you're in violation, okay? And it's very important, the slowest things move, to try to keep this stuff moving.
Agreed.
So I want to understand, want you to understand that it wasn't a anti, you're doing what you're doing, I just don't like to have things dragged out, I don't think it's fair to you, it costs you money and it's not fair to the people. We need to make a decision on this.
And that's why in, in my letter, I'd indicated that I had neglected to submit the, the contract that I got from that noise company that was supposed to be attached to that. And when I, when I viewed the meeting, it was like, well, I wanted a response to the, the proposal that they sent me before I signed the contract and that's, that's why I wasn't here. I certainly want this to move forward. And also, mind you, thus far, I've had my entertainment inside. I mean, not that it's been stellar weather, but I mean, a couple, you know, a couple of days ago, I said, just keep it inside for now until, you know, we find, find a solution or at least, you know, pick a direction to move in. And also, mind you, not only do I, you know, stop music at 5:00 PM, I close at 10:00 PM. I close at 10:00 at night. You know, obviously I could stay open later, but I, I don't want, I don't want to, I never had wanted to and that's been my hours for many years, because nothing good ever happens, you know, after 10:00 PM anyway.
What are the, get now and vent and lighten us on this, I guess? Could the board, to try to make the townspeople happy and not be cost prohibitive on the business, could the board amend the conditions like a three-year plan that he would, he would follow, say like, this year he's putting up the fence and, which obviously is pretty expensive? And then next year, like Gavin was talking about, plant some new shrubs around or whatever he was talking about and like, he can operate, but this year he has to do this, next year he has to do that, and the year after that, is that something that would be feasible or agreeable to the board? Because we are talking, and I know we're not supposed to take this into consideration, but it's a lot of money. What do you say, Ben?
It's an interesting idea. I don't know that I've ever seen an approach like that. I've seen applicants propose phased projects where, you know, they're gonna build this section and then come back later and do another section, but I've never seen a phased approval that would let someone operate with, you know, if, if you had an inkling that a fence and shrubs and whatever else were gonna be required, that would be part of the approval and someone might have a year, you know, as part of a normal permit process to get those things in place. But I, I don't recall ever seeing a, you know, multi-year kind of approach from the board on, on those kinds of things.
A wall wouldn't wait here, everybody.
Right. Ten centers.
I mean, I don't know, whatever you guys think, but I was just thinking.
The wall, the wall is gonna happen. I've just kind of been dragging my feet, trying to figure out what the best, you know, materials are absolutely disgusting too, you know, but that's a whole other story. But I talked with someone local who had just harvested some hemlocks in town here about potentially, you know, getting those milled out and using those on the back wall because they're pretty heavy, they can be heavy duty thick and what have you. I, you know, I want a heavy, I want a significant wall. Like, you know, if I get, you know, if I, I was thinking, you know, five-quarter PT from Home Depot at $16 a board to fill in all that space, how effective is that gonna be ultimately? In talking with different sound engineering companies, sealed up is better, nice and tight from the ground up is what works, is most effective. So my first order of business is to get that rear wall completed, obviously the knee wall, but the knee wall is, is, you know, short, it does help, it is a filter, but the big wall across the back is, is what I want, what I intend to, intend to finish first and get on it as soon as I can get the materials. And then as far as trees go, I, it's pretty tall woods out there right now and to fill in those holes, we're talking some pretty significant tree heights. And I'm not saying I'm not for it, but I've never seen anybody planting, you know, 50, 60-foot trees, you know, easily. I think in my experience, you put in those, those sugar pines, the softwood pine, they grow pretty quickly. But, I mean, pretty quickly, I mean, probably in four or five years, we'd have a nice thick cover. Because that's one thing that I did notice is when I went Because that's one thing that I did notice, is when I went down to the complainants' property line and I looked up, it's very thin in that area. And the property was cut before I owned it, and I don't know what used to be. I don't, but it, it looks thin. However, I do have a lot of new growth, a lot of sugar pines, and they are, you know, they're twelve, fourteen feet tall, you know, but obviously, they have a long ways to go to, to play an effective buffer. And then, you know, once again, you know, that's on me. I'm putting the wall up, and then once I get my stage up there, I got a portable stage, you know, I'm gonna put some kind of a canvas roof on it and try different things. I have a few ideas, I'm no sound professional, but just different things to buffer the, buffer the, the music during the day. But I like, once again, you know, during, during normal events, during my weeklies, you know, I do my music Saturdays and Sundays, done at five o'clock. I do some music indoors, I'm closed up tight, 10 o'clock. At least nobody else is coming in at 10:00. The doors are locked and, you know, we wind it down. And there's definitely no music, the music ends at 10:00.
I think that's a good, a good point between the board and the applicant. And if you've got people a little bit upset on either side of this issue, myself personally, I think you've been successful.
I think we're, either way, we're gonna have people upset on either side, right?
I mean, stuff that we're gonna ask Greg to do, or he's going to do something, he's gonna say that's very unreasonable. Like I said, if you got half of them don't like this, and the other ones are a little bit tired of it, I say you done a pretty good job.
I do, I do have a lot of support over there on the pond, you know. A lot of the folks are regular customers and, you know, I know everybody out there on the pond is good people, you know, I just, you know, work with me also. You know, I'm willing to do what I have to do and continue to try and improve my situation in the backyard as far as noise goes as things develop, you know, but I gotta start somewhere.
But those aren't the people we hear from, Greg.
Yeah, I know, I know. You know, when that, when there was first, it was a public hearing, you know, I didn't think it was appropriate to turn it into a circus, because, hey, yeah, go Greg and all this, that's just, you know, that's not the time for it, you know, that's, that's not help, it's helpful, but it's not helpful, because it's irrelevant at the end of the day. It's about the people that have a problem and trying to appease them.
So what I'm gonna do myself, I'm like, normally I do, I voice my opinion, and now you guys can say what you want to do moving forward. But I wanna get this thing moving, you know, you guys got a business to run.
I think we all do wanna get it moving. I think if, if Greg, you can prove that, that all the ordinance, if you meet the ordinance criteria, how can, how can you be denied? But if there's a problem with meeting the criteria, how can you prove that you can meet it, like you're trying to do, like you're saying, you're making adjustments for the time for the concerts and so forth? But also, there are some other things that I think we could talk about on your application that you have listed.
Okay.
Because we seem to be stuck on this decibels and, and all that, and I think Ben already addressed it, you know, if we talk about the times and so forth, but there's some other things on the, on the application. Does anybody else wanna talk about that? I mean...
Yeah, absolutely, we should, and then we can read through the standards for a conditional use permit.
That's, that's where I would like to go, and then we can kind of move forward on this and, and put it to bed.
What are your concerns, Pat?
Um, they aren't concerns, they're just things that need to be addressed, like the retail gift shop, you know? And then there were some other things, food trucks, I think was on there. You know, what I'm thinking about is what constitutes an expansion or a change of use, because that's what we have to look at on that list. Is there anything on there that, I mean, let's look at the list, I guess.
Change of use, I think not. I don't think I'm really having a change of use in the purpose of the, the food trucks is to address the current situation. It's getting people fed, lack of employees. You know, I've changed how, I've had to change how we're serving people this year. You know, this year I have folks coming up, they're placing their food order, they're paying for it, we're giving them the pager.
Yeah.
And, you know, I saw a model like that in Florida. I thought it was pretty, pretty creative, and believe me, I was sweating bullets because I got a lot of folks that come in for dinner. And, but everybody was very receptive to it, and they, and they understand. And it's worked out pretty well, and we, we managed to serve a lot more food, a lot quicker, but in the same token, you know, that's with me in the kitchen, you know. I'm fortunate to have the few people I do, but I need more. But that brings me to the food trucks. The purpose of the food trucks is to provide more food and eating opportunities for the customers.
So are those your...
And getting everybody served.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No.
Are those your food trucks, or are those having other people...
Kind of a double whammy. I would love to be able to control the food quality and also the, the type of food that is served, because I don't want to undermine my own kitchen. Ultimately, I would love to own them, but then I'm still back to the same, so I might have a food truck, but who's gonna work it? Who's gonna work it? So I, I'm going to look for outside folks that, hey, we do tacos. I don't do tacos. So see if I can get them to come down. And, you know, just take the load off the kitchen, you know, and just have more food options for people. And that is the purpose of the food truck. I'm not turning to, you know, I'd like to have three or four options ultimately, I mean, so people have that, and we're talking Motorcycle Week and then weekends, you know, not during the weekend. They'll be within the confines of the out, you know, within the fence line is where they would be, they would be parked. And that's even to say, it's hard to get food trucks now. They're very much in demand because all the restaurants are in the same spot.
Yeah, everybody wants to be out.
You know, I mean, Conings is killing it down there, but those food trucks don't need Conings anymore. Everybody wants food trucks. I've called a couple already, we're spoken for. We don't have any available, we're not available. And, you know, that's apparently the new, the new, new thing. So that was where the food trucks came in. And then as far as the retail, I have a small retail gift shop within the confines of the restaurant, and what I'd like to do is expand that, but I'd be taking what is storage now and converting it to a bigger retail area. And in doing that, obviously, would require a building permit, meaning fire code and all that, so, and I'm aware of what I have to do there. But that's a project that's, you know, gonna be somewhat costly, and I don't know how long the approval is good for. If you say, okay, you can do it, do I have one year, do I have two years to do something towards that?
Do you have a permit for that already?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a permit?
No, I haven't applied. I wanna get the approval, and then I would apply for a building permit, and then move forward with that when, when the funds are available. I just was throwing it out on the table as part of, you know, what my big plan is. And that is my big plan, and that's, that's the end of it.
And you mentioned having some other people come in to be able to sell their wares as well?
Oh, like, yeah, I got, I get different vendors that come in within the fence line and, you know, people, for example, there's a fellow that's been coming around lately, and he sells, it's called Gray Broadway Industries, his T-shirts, T-shirts, sweatshirts, what have you, that appeal to the motorcycle in public. And they just, and then I have, I've had people in the past that sell jewelry, so, you know, kind of like, I guess, a flea market, motorcycle flea market, so, so to speak. And then outside of that, I also have folks that come up, they, hey, you know, can we see, would you mind setting up a table, we're raising money for this situation or that situation? It's like, absolutely, come on in.
I don't have that one in front of me.
Ben has something. Yeah, I think along those lines, a couple clarifying questions that might help the board understand. When you're talking food trucks, you're talking about, are you talking about those special kind of one-off occasional events, or are you talking on a normal weekend, you might have a food truck or two?
On a normal weekend, I would like, I would love to. I would love to have, you know, food trucks, like I say, to take some of the load off the kitchen and give my customers more options.
So I, I think along those lines, I'm, I'm making a list of, of things that the plan should show, and I suggest that the plan should probably show where those food trucks would be on the site.
Yeah.
As far as impacts on circulation and parking areas. And then another kind of clarifying question in regard to the retail, and I heard you speak a little bit about this, but the difference between a, an accessory kind of retail operation that's, you know, glassware, clothing, whatever, accessory to the Iron Tales versus...
Rennies.
Right. Or the kind of retail that would attract new trips or new people to the restaurant versus people who are going to the restaurant and grab a glass on the way.
Yeah, no, this is all, this is all my own printed Iron Tail Saloon, T-shirts, glasses, sweatshirts, what have you, all related to my specific business.
And that's what you're showing on the plan, as that little retail area.
That I have inside the main building, yeah, but then, like I said, I would expand that, because it, it's pretty tight quarters.
Okay.
And, you know, I mean, I have the good fortune of selling a lot of T-shirts, and it certainly helps the bottom line. And so, you know, it's an important part of the business, the retail piece.
About twenty-five.
And I've always done that, but I'm to a point where, you know, we need more space. And it also allows me to bring in, you know, more product, more, you know, different things, light glassware, light thermoses and coolers, and pencils, you know, whatever, anything with, you know, with my brand on it.
I had a question, Greg, about your exhibitions. What would those specifically be? You said PM concerts, comedy shows, and exhibitions.
Okay, well, I've had comedy shows in the past, and, you know...
Comedy shows, comedy.
Yeah, yeah, right. I mean, like, you know, that's just things, examples of things that I, what I would do probably at night. But exhibitions, I've had professional stunt riders do shows for my customer base, doing tricks on motorcycles. That's what I mean by exhibitions.
Is that all that?
Yeah.
So...
I'm afraid to say yes, because, hey, you know, I mean, but that's, that's, that's what I'm talking about when I say, you know, an exhibition of, you know, a stunt, stunt show.
Okay.
You guys wanna go over the site plan review?
I do.
You want you to read it, see what you're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
The conditional use, like, Dennis.
Yeah?
Yeah, so it'd be, I think they're a little bit different.
Who's that, Gavin?
I'm just, I'm just wondering whether we use the same standards for conditional use as site plan review, when we read through them.
I don't know. Where you got me?
There, there is a lot of overlap between the things, right?
More from the site plan review, I think you just have to read the conditional use.
So six dot six dot three dot four.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just got the site plan review.
I don't know if you can run that in front of you? No. Okay. Uh, page two and three. Be six, six, six dot six dot three dot four. No, but I'm reading people, normally spawning fish and...
Yeah, they're, they're...
Normally what we do is we go down through each question.
Yeah, yeah.
And you would read the question, and then it's either yes, no, or N/A.
Yeah.
And you go down through each one like that, and then the application, and that's done.
All right. Everybody ready?
Well, so, help me out here, are we on conditional use review or site plan review?
Conditional use, which is page two of the, right there, six...
Yeah.
Six dot three dot four. What's that?
My one, my little closer.
My decibel level's not loud enough? The standards listed in section six dot six dot three dot seven have been reviewed and found that, A, the use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat, habitat.
That's what I have.
And A. The use will conserve, that's B, is the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies, and A. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I think that was still...
No reference in there.
Working on that.
I don't think there's any reference in the concrete plan, but is it on? Do you read it? I don't remember.
So we'd say yes?
Yes. D, traffic access to the site needs standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic concession has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance. Is that yes?
Only because what they do is you'll say what it is.
Yeah.
Somebody disagrees with it, they'll speak up.
Okay. The site design is conformant with municipal flood hazard protections and regulations. Adequate provision for disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made.
Yes.
Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made.
Yes.
A stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed.
I believe that was prior to, because I know that there's a retention pond on the, that would be the east end of the property, because when it rains hard, it all fills up in there, and it's my understanding that that's how it was designed. The water's collected in the front of the property, in front of the white fence, and...
On the left, with the parking lot.
If you're looking, if you're looking at the front doors, on the left.
Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made.
Yes.
Yes. The adequate water, water supply to meet demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes.
Yes.
The provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like.
Yeah.
Performance standards in this ordinance are applicable to the proposed use and will be met. Archaeological and historic resources as designated in this comprehensive plan will be protected.
That's N/A.
Then, just go to the public hearing, which we already had.
We already had.
And that was April twenty-second, correct? Was that the last meeting we just reviewed minutes for?
I think it was previous to that.
Yeah, okay.
Would, would, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, for a sidewalk, I mean, if you all to come down and see, be onsite and see what I'm doing and see the direction, might be helpful to all of you.
I mean, this is not, you, Greg, well, myself, I don't need a sidewalk.
Yeah, I think we kind of leave the sidewalk, so to speak.
Yeah, because what is he gonna do if we do decide to do a sidewalk, is gonna put this out two weeks later.
Ah, yeah, well...
Because you have to have your notification and all this stuff in your schedules and...
I just, you know, like I said, I, I got nothing to hide. You know, everything's out there in the open, and anybody's welcome to come in, you know, like I said, I look at where the property...
Yeah, you do have a lot of flow sometimes, that is something we haven't really talked about, but.
The traffic flow?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, and I believe, I believe the current site plan that's on file does show the traffic flow and, as well as, like I said, it's marked onsite too, and I'm having, I'm having the lines repainted.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm taking some further steps because I have some, you know, safety concerns onsite.
I don't know if you have it on that. Excuse me, the one we just went through for the conditional use, those boxes have to be marked accordingly, however, for what you have that on your user.
Yeah.
You say you was doing that as we.
Yeah, I've been making notes.
Normally Chris would have an extra copy, give it to the secretary, and they would do whatever in the boxes if we go through them, that we did, so be put in the file.
Right.
And we'd put a note as to what, you know, how it met the standard.
Right.
You know, like for the traffic, you say he's gonna repaint the lines and have signage, we would put that down. I think the applicant has done quite a bit to address the issues. Of course, we're not sure exactly, you know, what the sound's gonna be like, but I feel like with him operating with the live music only during the daytime hours, that's gonna really help a lot with neighborhood concerns.
Gavin, my only concern is that, you know, historically, that's what I've done, that's what I've been doing all along. I, last year, I had music outside on Friday nights, I think in, from mid-July through August, and I was down at 10 o'clock, but the complaints were coming on Saturday and Sunday at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I was like, come on. But regardless, I mean, it is what it is, and the ordinance is the ordinance, the number's the number.
Right.
So that's, that's all, that's all I can do, is operate on that. And as, like, as things develop, I get my wall up and all that, and if I'm out on the property line and I'm reading 65 decibels and, and, and people are whispering, or people are like, turn it up, turn it up, because we can't hear it, well, then I have to take additional steps to dampen the noise so I can turn the volume up to an appropriate level for the folks that are there for the live music. Do you know what I mean? So it's kind of like, it's a process, if you will. So I may have to, you know, I may, first show, and I gotta be honest with you, I don't know what it's gonna sound like. When I get out there on the property line and I got a, okay, I got a 50-decibel reading, and then you go up there and it's, you know, it's like an air conditioner running, you know, and then you got a lot of people all together, it's like we can't hear the music because we're all talking. But, you know, that, that's, that's the potential direction this will go, so. I don't, I don't know until I live it.
So I guess we should get a final plan before this and.
Hold on, it's an evening.
Yeah, unless you want to vote tonight and, you know, with the list of conditions.
Yeah, we can do that.
I walked in a little bit late and I apologize for that. Greg, you were talking about some of the larger venues you were gonna treat as possibly mass gathering summits?
Yes, yeah. For example, Bike Week. Bike Week, there's, there's activity through the week. I do, and, and when I submit my mass gathering, and this is probably irrelevant to this board, but when I submit, I'm gonna spell out what my, what my schedule looks like, so they know exactly what's going on. Like during the week, it's not bad. And also during Bike Week, I see all the activity during the day because people are riding, but at the end of the night, they're all back in Laconia, pretty much, they're not, they're not in town here. I'm not saying it's gonna be a ghost town, what I'm saying is, my activities during the day, during the week, I just have a guy playing guitar Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, he starts at like noon to four, and then that's it. But on the weekends, I've got the burnout competition on the, the second Saturday of Bike Week, and then I have big shows planned, I have Hank Williams' great, 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 great grandson performing on the 12th, and I'd like to do that show outside, and that show's gonna be an evening show. Definitely done by 10 o'clock, maybe sooner, I don't have the final, final layout, but that's what I would do the mass gathering permit for, and also obviously the burnout competition, because I'll be, you know, for that. And mind you, the burnout competition, it's such a small window of time, you know, I don't have a whole lot of people that get up there and do it, and actually, the actual noise maybe in its entirety will last 25 minutes in increments of five minutes. So, you know, you get these blasts when they're up there doing their thing, but then it ends. So, but, they will, you know, it's gonna be over the noise ordinance, so, you know, that's why I figured it's a good time, an appropriate time to have, have the permit, and also, you know, to keep everybody informed exactly what's going on, because my schedule's my schedule, I not only gotta let the, I gotta let the world know what's going on to, you know, get them to come on down, as well as, you know, the board and the neighbors and what have you. So when I do submit my mass gathering permits, July 3rd, I have another big show planned, and I'd like to do that one outdoors. I'm not saying it's gonna go till 10 o'clock, but it will be after 5:00. So those are the times that I would be before the board. And currently, I only have, currently, I only have two of those events planned that I'd like to do outdoors. You know, and it's, you know, it's a dollar and cents thing, it's bringing good, it's bringing good, good entertainment, but also covering the nut, making some money too.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up the burnout competition, because we, we have had complaints about that too, not just the sound, but also the odor.
Yeah.
And like the, you know, smoke per se, entering 109, compared to traffic. I wouldn't say the board should necessarily condone that activity, but in terms of the music, I'm pretty pleased with the progress we've made with you.
Can we move on, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Gavin started to say something about.
Conditions.
Conditions.
Well, we kind of, we just read through them, so, you know, under D, I think we should make a condition that he repaints those lines and has, has signage that, you know, informs motorists that there's motorcycles entering. Is there anything on 109 currently?
Uh, not, not to my knowledge. I, I know the York County Sheriff's Department, but I, you know, use, watch motorcycles and things of that nature, I mean, I can only control the signage on my own property and, and the safety on my own property, you know, and like I say, I've got directional, directional signs, directional arrows, and then exiting the property, I'm having new informational signs made, just advising people to use their head.
Go slowly and.
Uh, use their head.
Yeah, because you'll have to consider traffic flow, so if we have kind of those things under D.
And the food trucks will be in the fenced-in area.
Yes.
And they'll, they're.
If in fact, if in fact I can get them, you know, I.
The locations will be demarked on the plan where you would have, where you would set up the food trucks.
I will, I will get that plan updated, and I don't know how long it's gonna take corner posts to get it, everybody's so darn busy. I mean, you know, they've been very good to me over the years, but I know they're, obviously, everybody's busy, but that shouldn't be too much of a change, it's just a matter of taking the existing plan and adding, adding that line there.
Yeah, and.
Vendors.
K would be your friends.
Yep.
Who would just, now they're full, right? I think it's as tall as he.
It may be, it may be higher.
It looks, it looks tall.
Well, yeah, the poster, the poster, the poster, posters are definitely 12 feet.
Yeah.
And depending on materials, you know, and like I said, I'm gonna go 10 feet, if I, if I think two, two more feet's gonna help, I'll go 12, do you know what I mean? So it's up to me to meet the ordinance, so.
Right, you can always.
I can put, I can put six, I think that's an exercise in futility, you know, that's why I went 12 originally. And then I was working with somebody else, he's, well, that, you know, and then I said, well, Jesus, okay, well, if that's not gonna help it, then I'll just do eight, because regardless, I need a fence for more than just the sound, I need the security of that area. I need that area secure. I'm sorry?
What's the height of the fence that you're proposing, though? Eight or 10?
I'll do 10.
10?
Yeah, the higher the better, as far as I'm concerned.
And before we get off that point, the plan that I have shows it along the back of the property line away from Route 109, but also along the side of Milton Mills Road, is that?
That's correct.
That's all the same fence?
It's, it's not, it's a little bit different up front, however, I do intend to continue the similar fence up to my tank room, but right now, I've got enough, right now, I've got a lot of fence to put up. So right now, it goes up to the Milton Mills exit of my property, which, you know, so if you're in back, and that's an exit only where people leave from the back area, I have the telephone poles going up to that point. Going forward, I intend to put telephone poles up around and then connect to the building, so it will be completely enclosed eventually.
So I, I think that the plan that you, that you bring back should show that is, again, the version I see has a, it's labeled 12-foot and it goes all the way around, so if that's not the board's expectation, the, you know, it should be reflective of what the board is actually approving.
Now, my question is this, if I, you know, my intent for next season is to finish the fence and be that tall all the way up to that building. Can I set the plan there that way, or do I have to get it changed again, or can I just say this is the proposal and it will be done in, you know, 2022, summer, before the summer of 2022 or something of that nature?
In generally, I mean, I, I might ask members of the board, these, these approvals are good for, you know, I've seen some communities, and I would have to look it up, one year or two years from the date of approval, it gives you a certain amount of time to build out the plan. So I, I think if the plan showed the fence, there would be an expectation that, you know, it might not happen by this fall, but certainly within a reasonable amount of time, and that's.
Build it for a match, two years.
Right, so if this approval is, is granted for a fence going all the way around, you'd have to do that within the timeline of a building permit.
Yep.
Any other conditions that you, you alls are interested in?
No, I just, I, I think the, I don't know if we need a condition around the retail stuff, but I think we need to be clear on the application, you know, we removed the special events from the application, that's between you and the selectmen, remove Friday nights, which for outdoors, from the application, and that leaves, other than the acoustic during Bike Week, that leaves Saturday and Sunday 1 to 5.
That's correct.
I think we just gotta make sure the application.
Oh, right, right.
So just to restate that, a condition shown on the plan should say outdoor entertainment, Saturday, Sunday, 1 to 5?
Yeah.
That was fair reflection of what that was?
Although he did state.
What's that?
Greg did state with like Hank Williams' great, great, great.
No, no.
Yeah, no, but that would be, that would be before the selectmen, that would be before the selectmen, and, you know, my Bike Week activities that are beyond the parameters that we're discussing here would go before selectmen.
So we can make a motion on that tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're clear on our conditions.
Oh, yeah, you wanna do that now, or do you want Ben to read them back?
The, the two conditions that I have are to, condition of approval, one is to repaint parking lines and install internal signage for traffic control, and condition number two is outdoor entertainment is limited to Saturdays and Sundays between 1 and 5.
And the food truck.
And then the other items we talked about, updating the plan to show food truck parking area, a service area, and showing the extent of the fencing.
Right.
Including the height of the fencing on the updated plan. I don't think those need to be conditions of approval if you bring back the plan with those modifications on them.
Okay.
And then list conditions one and two near the signature block, so that it's clear what those conditions are.
Are we addressing vendors as well?
And then.
Oh, vendors.
I'm sorry?
You mentioned it, Chris.
Vendors, they're, they're gonna stay inside the fenced-in area, I'm assuming as well.
Yes, yes.
We usually have them, worry about the old code, storage building in that area.
Yeah, yeah, but they'll be within the confines of the fence, yeah, so, my, you know, my primary customer base has access to them without going into the front parking lot.
Planting's Gavin.
Seems like we're getting there.
I didn't know if it was.
Everybody's all set?
Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit for Greg Martinez, Iron Tales, 559, Route 109, map 148, law 1, conditional use application. Update.
Second.
I'll second it.
I guess nobody's gonna second it.
I'll second.
No.
You can't second.
Why?
With the conditions.
With conditions.
With the conditions.
All right, I'll second that.
You're being promised that.
So now you just gotta.
On that site plan, I'll also, I'll also show the, where the new gift shop is gonna go. It's a conversion, right now, it's just a storage building full of junk, but I would indicate, I would show that on the new site plan, although going forward that, I would, obviously, I have to get a.
Building permit to, to do the build out on it.
Right.
Tell, tell Pat she's still voting then.
Yeah, she, she will.
You're free, Greg.
I'm free, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Sir.
Next is York County Agricultural Association.
I received confirmation that you knew the meeting was Monday, May 10. I've tried to reach you until last hour, but I'm successful, but he did inform that the meeting was tonight, so.
You want to blow that?
table it postponed until, postpone until, you wanna put him on the next?
Would that be?
The. New business, that, so Dennis comes in.
I just wanted to let the board know first that my term runs out in June, and I'm gonna be all done serving on the board. There's been a lot the last few years just going on in town, and some of it has been negatively directed at me, and at my age, kinda like. There's been a lot the last few years just going on in town. And some of it has been negatively directed at me. And at my age, kinda like, I'm not gonna continue to be on the planning board. With that said, I don't think it's any big loss anyway sometimes, but I've really enjoyed working with everybody on this board. I think everybody here has a little different philosophy, which I think makes a real good board, and it's very respectful, and I respect all of you because of this. But I'm gonna pick on Jim for a minute.
Sure.
All right, you and me. Jim and I go back a long ways. We have plotted together to get things done. Examples will be the playground at the school.
This conversation you're having right now, I, I just thought about all of this.
And the two ballfields, Jim was on the school board at that time. And I remember very clearly, we had a price to do what we did do from some professionals of $460,000.
Yeah.
And with the volunteerism in the kids, in parents, and some contractors in town, we got the soccer field, the baseball field, the new playground moved out from next to Milton Mills Road for $125,000. When we started that project, we were told it couldn't be done. Jim and I have had some problems over the years, in and out, like most people do. But I think Jim will tell you, for example, on this board, that's got nothing to do with my performance or his performance on the planning board. We always, with anything we've ever worked on, tried to do what was best for the community. And our personal feelings about certain things don't mean anything. And I see a lot of that with, with these people, just like that last board. There's been so much going on between, and I'm not talking about you, Jim. Just be very clear about that. There's been so much going on with attacks from time to time towards the planning board. I just don't wanna deal with it anymore. I love doing this. It's Jim will tell you, and Gavin will tell you, I've been doing, giving to my community my whole life, back when Gavin was just a, and I'm gonna miss it, but I just can't do it anymore. And I wanted to tell the board first out of respect, before I said anything to anybody else, because, Chris, I'm, I'm just directing to you.
Of course.
There's, there was some criticism when I nominated you chairman. But I think you've done a pretty good job, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Once in a while, and anyway, I just wanted to say that, and also, I'll be here for three more meetings.
Could I follow up on that?
Sure.
Dennis was talking about the playground down there, a lot of people have no idea what we went through to get that done. It was one little field out back, and it was all hills, and that was it for all the kids. And he's giving me credit, but he was the clerk of the works down there when this was going on. It was a massive, how many yards of gravel, we bought it, we, we bought it, we had, we had local guys come in with their excavators to, that didn't charge us to help us with the fields and.
60,000 yards.
60,000 yards, we had, we moved out of there when we bought it, that to have all kinds of work done. These are regulation-sized fields with underground sprinkler there, this is like a gunquit, Kennebunk Fields, Kennebunk Ford Fields, it's, it's beautiful, you know you've been down there. But Dennis really is the one who, he was the clerk of the works, he was there every day, and I, I understand what he's saying, there were, there were local folks who you think would have helped us out in this venture, but instead, they called DEP and OSHA, and they, it was just an absolute relentless, just to get their way to stop the project, you know? The engineering study, we hired a company out of Berwick, and when their study came back, I forget what did we, what did we pay for that, do you remember that?
Yeah.
And the survey was wrong, all the, you know, it, it was just unbelievable. So Dave Cody had his eighth grade class, they went out, remember that? They put, Dave took, he, he just had a, you know, work of, you know, do surveying work, and he had some help, and they put the plan together, and it was the eighth grade students, and that's who we went with to get it done. But he was the one who was there every day, taking the brunt of it. I remember one day I went down there and he was, he was wiped out. Some of the messages left on his, his voicemail, he played it back to me, I was on the school committee at the time, just disheartening, you know? And alls we were trying to do is create fields for the kids in, in this town, opportunity. And what he did was, it was really, really impressive, and I, and I think about it all the time, of all the things. I hear the little kids down from my farm every day, and that's all I think about. Every single day, I think of the aggravation and everything we had to go through, but at the end of the day, it's worth it, you hear them all screaming, the playground, they didn't have.
I do a lot of that.
And just to follow up with, another thing he said, I've, I've been on a lot of boards in this town, not only this town, but before I moved here, I've been involved, and I gotta tell you, this, this group of people right here, I mean, Pat, I mean, where do you find a guy like John? This guy is, you know what I mean, he's a good, good man, you know, and I've always respected Gavin, you know? We don't, I don't always agree with everything he does, but this guy is so committed, and he believes in, you know, what he stands for. And Chris, just this whole board here, I am so impressed and, and thankful to be a part of this group of people right here. Of all the boards I've been on in this town, you know, I think everybody here is here for the right reason, and that's so important, you know? And, you know, sorry to see you go, Dennis, you know? But I understand what you're saying, you get burned out, I've, I've been there before, and, you know, it just gets old and you get tired, you know, but thank you.
Or I get old and tired.
What's that?
Or I just get old and tired.
Yeah.
But anyway, thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis.
Any projects? Yeah, there, there are just a couple of updates on the agenda. Martella states, no action this evening, and Kelly Orchard's, no action this evening, but they are expected to be on the agenda for the next meeting on the 20th. There's another handout that Jennifer had provided to the board. This is our running list of active projects that, it's not every project, there, there's a lot of projects that the, that the board deals with, practical location and minor subdivisions that don't go to North Star Planning for review, but these, these are the projects that we are kinda minding and helping the board facilitate the, the process. So if there's information, as you take a look at this, part of it is just keeping track on it for our own purposes, and part of it is coordinating with the town to make sure that we all have the latest submissions and are accurate on where the schedules are. So I would consider this a work in progress, it's just kind of a rough working list. So if you have things that you notice between now and the next meeting, as far as, you know, questions about plan revisions, or whether or not a sidewalk has been required, or with the data, when it happened, those kinds of things, we can keep that updated just for our own purposes. This isn't any kind of regulatory or any kind of thing, it's, it's really just a project management tool that we can use to make sure we're all communicating well together.
Again, Dennis, maybe you don't know that. When we set up, when we set up these accounts, well, say like, any of these businesses, they have to, we have to set up an account, you know, for, say like on a gravel pit. And they have to put out $5,000, let's say, if they're gonna have a gravel pit for reclaiming and stuff like that.
Yes, for accounts.
Yeah, now that all goes through Michelle.
Correct, we set up a separate account, and then we bill on it.
So this unknown number on this.
Yeah, he just sent that to me today, so I didn't feel the numbers ever again, now we know what fees they've paid.
Yeah.
I, I think that's really just kind of a check mark, you know, the presumption is applications are gonna have their fees paid before they're on an agenda, that's part of the submission requirements. So I, I am not personally, right, I'm not receding application fees, so that's something I'll need to coordinate with staff on, make sure that we can put check marks next to all of those.
Yeah, I, I guess that, like you said, that isn't even what we're doing.
We'll double check all four of those, he sent that over this afternoon, and all four of these applications were recorded before the previous ladies sat left, so I have to also assume that they were, they were payable, follow up on who weren't on the plan, or they can get your number, put it in there.
We all got our packet that was handed out about the solar.
If I could, Mr. Jim, and ask Mike, they've been moving on that project up on the H Road, the solar project. Have you not looked at that at all, Mike?
What do you mean they're moving now?
They've, they've started looking at the solar up there on the H Road, behind Phil's Breeze, that way it used to hang.
Oh, you're talking about the Doyle's?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed this one, I was getting nervous. Who's saying it started it? He has an update, Ben should have an update on, on the Doyle's tonight.
I don't think they've started any panels though, have they?
No, they haven't started any panels, but they've done an awful lot of.
Bulldozer.
Work up there, and they've done a lot of bulldozers. And I've had, what if you phone calls about it? And I don't remember any of that when we did that, do you, Gavin? They would drive the poles and they would.
Right, it was supposed to be minimal groundwork, really, just, just digging trenches for the electrical.
Yeah, well, they generally, they got a bulldozer up there, bulldozers off the topsoil and different things and.
Dennis, if I may, that, if I was just kinda, possibly with Mike, that's the one that we're waiting for the bond. I mean, you know, come back and forth, so they were, they contacted me in order to find out the next step to get their permit from Code enforcement, and I spoke to the murders about it, he said that he wasn't, weren't permitted, wasn't ready to be permitted until we knew we had the bond.
Right, that's why it was left.
Yeah, so I think the last email we must have gotten was probably Friday, he said that we should see a authorized bond by the first of this week, so far, we haven't received anything, and I know that Mike is holding off. And I'm gonna be attorney.
I, I, you need, he probably is holding off, but they aren't.
Sounds like they're gonna take it back.
I would, I would just like, you know, to make sure that the conditions that we, we put on it at the time followed, that's all, and it was supposed to be very little disturbance up there. That's what they had said. It surely wasn't even talking bulldozers. You're asking that right, Gavin, do you remember that?
That's what I remember, because we, we asked them about, you know, roads should control and everything, and they said, you know, there're gonna be pounded posts and just the trench digging for the electric.
Yeah, and that was it, bulldozer next to the fence.
Right, and the construction of the, or any of the things, yeah.
Dennis, go send this email after, well, Mike, just get more guys an update.
Sure.
Do we have any papers from the Martell states to?
No, the, the email that I last sent out to you guys, I tried to spell it out as clearly as possible, so when we last left it, you were going to make determination whether or not you wanted a public hearing, and I'm impressed that you all wanted a copy of the preliminary plan. And we started digging for it, Martell's attorneys have contacted the town and indicated that they were making changes to the preliminary plan, it's gonna be all in the plan. So that's essentially why they came off the agenda, because they're not ready for that plan to work. So we didn't think there was any reason to do a plan that's just gonna change. So until they come to us with, here's a new plan, there's nothing to give.
So are they starting from scratch with a new plan?
Yes, sir.
So I mean, we have to prove the plan before we.
We'll have to accept the plan.
Accept the plan.
And then do the public hearing.
Right, so generally, when a, a brand-new application is received, kinda like the preliminary application we, we had with the San Page Solar folks a couple of meetings ago, we, we accepted that plan, and that begins, there, there's no action, it's, it's more of an acknowledgement that we have received the plan. From that point is when the timelines start associated with public, time to public hearing, and, and the amount of time you have to submit final plans. So the idea is that once you've accepted the preliminary plan, going forward, you're, you're voting on things, and you are approving, approving with conditions, or denying applications going forward. That approval, that acceptance at the beginning is really just a, starting the timer kind of activity. So it doesn't have any standing until you accept the plan.
Are we expecting Martell and his engineer at the next meeting, or we just?
It, it's, it's really on their schedule, I have not gotten any indication that this is gonna be on an agenda in May at all.
I spoke to the attorney myself, and he, possibly June, they're working on these issues with DEP, they wanna get that straightened out before they come back to the planning board. And now that they know they're not on a time crunch, if you will, it was a new application, they will, you know, they'll come to you when they're ready, but I expect they'll be doing it in a while.
Ben, what, what constitutes a cluster development? Just something that, if you could answer that for me.
There's a, there's a good definition in our subdivision regulations.
Yeah, I read that.
This was by, right, Jim, this was by Maustow.
What's that?
It's the less land for, for houses, like down on the San Page Road, or Nathan Road. Those are all one-acre lots or something, and normally, we'd have two-acre lots with a cluster. The whole, the whole rationale for that is you put more houses in a smaller area, and then you leave more of the land for open space for any tax.
No, in this town, I'm just confused, and this is just, conversation has nothing to do with, in this town, the way I read it, cluster development is not allowed in the shoreline zone?
We're all clustered houses and this and all.
What's that?
I might be good to answer that.
I don't, hey, I'm not totally familiar with that ordinance, but I wouldn't imagine that it wouldn't be allowed.
No, it's written in the land use chart, it's not allowed.
Right, that's, that's I thought, so where does all this fall into? This, this isn't considered cluster building at all, this development?
Well, it depends how the development occurred, if it's, it's one over, one owner has a large parcel, and they break it up, they choose how they break it up, you know, traditional subdivision, a cluster subdivision, just one big estate, whatever, but where you have, you know, like the shoreline around the lakes is, we've got multiple owners, long periods of time in which the properties were broken up, you know what I mean? It's not, there's no overarching plan that brought us to that point. You know what I'm saying?
The comprehensive plan, Jim says the planning board should be encouraging cluster subdivision, and the rationale for that is because then you're preserving more open space.
Yeah, the way I read cluster development, I'm all for it, I believe in that, but my question is, in the shoreline zone, you know?
There, there.
It feels as though there's a fine line here to me.
Well, there, there's an awful lot of development in the shoreline zone on the lakes and ponds that predates zoning and predates the subdivision statute at the state. Those in large part are grandfathered, they were existing before zoning, and as long as they continue to exist, they, they're allowed to continue that use.
And I appreciate that, but that's not what I'm referencing.
I see.
I'm not referencing grandfathering, I'm talking about now, you know? It just, you know, we're, we're talking about abiding by, you know, the books in front of us, and if, I'm gonna be fair, write down the, you know, and hold everybody accountable.
And if, uh, I'm gonna be fair, write down the, you know, and hold everybody accountable. It, it feels to me as though something's off here. We've missed, we've missed something here or somebody has. You know? The way I read, and I've been reading it over and over, you know? I, I don't know, just to me, it feels like, uh, this is, it's definitely shoreline zone. Where all this development's going and. Seems like a cluster to me.
Are they smaller than, what is that lot size?
In the shoreline?
Yes.
Ninety thousand, ninety thousand square feet.
Are they proposed on less than ninety thousand feet?
No.
Per lot? No, they're not, so they're within, so you're saying they're, they're within it?
Well, we're not, we're not.
Shoreline only what, two hundred feet?
We're not talking about an applicant, are we?
Two hundred.
No, I, I.
No, we're just talking, we're talking in general, in general.
The shoreline zone only can start so far back from the water, Jim.
Right, I knew that, I knew that.
Two hundred feet or whatever.
Two fifty.
Then it's not shoreline zone anymore.
Yeah, but if.
Anything outside of.
The setback, if everything's so different.
Yeah, but within that development, even if a couple, if a couple houses in the, in a development, any development. You know, breach that two hundred feet. I don't know. I don't know, just, just questions.
Shoreline district with a hundred feet of like, or, or whatever. Seventy-five feet for real. So.
What are you trying, you're trying to ask if a parcel has some shoreline zone, some not shoreline zone in it? And the thing is to be.
I'm talking about any development put in the shoreline zone. You know, there's several homes, you know, they're, they're not all, you know, some of them are gonna be closer to the water than others, but, you know, it's all part of the same development. You know? And I'm just. I don't know, and I'm not talking about any development. That we're talking about, you know, I'm just talking about moving forward to help me think through this. You know, if we're gonna hold people accountable for what it's supposed to be, it's just, I don't know. Seems like we're missing something somewhere here.
The original intent around the lakes, Jim, when. Um. At least I can't even think of the name, huh, what's the matter? When they did like these developments, say like, um. On Lakeside Drive.
Yeah.
That part of it. What they, what the developers did was to get the road, you get down here where you can put your can, everybody's got a bath lot. So the original intent was, when they were doing this, was I can sell this one here and then I can sell this one here on this side, the side of the shoreline district. And that's what their intent to do down on, uh, Little Pond, not so bad. Uh, they're just all fifty foot lots down there, but a lot of the stuff on Gray East, uh, from these different develop, developers. Um. That was, that was their plan. Wilson Pond. Uh. Geez, Wilson Pond.
They get a bunch of back.
They don't talk about that, they filled in a bunch of swamp back fifty, seventy-five years ago, logs. And they covered it all with dirt so they could put the development in.
But, but like Ben says, those, those predate.
Oh, yes.
The ordinance, I'm talking about moving forward, you know what I mean?
I, I don't have a, a really long history and it's very, very common for a lot of, you know, grandfathering type situations around lakes and ponds. Uh, but I haven't seen anything in the last, you know, my two years here that have, you know, made me scratch my head about shoreline and cluster subdivisions, I. Uh, I'm not, you know, sure if you've maybe got an example or two or three that you might wanna have a conversation with the code officer or go back and look at the plan, but. Um. I think that those kinds of things might be informative to look at, but I, I can't think of anything that has been, you know, improper or anything along those lines.
You've seen a conflict between cluster development in the shoreline zone.
Pardon me, Beth?
You've seen a conflict.
Yeah, you know.
It doesn't, it.
I'm just looking for clarification, just thinking, you know? Trying to figure it all out, I'm, I'm new, you know? So it seems like there's mixed messages. But. That's all.
Yeah, we're waiting to discharge clearly states, the cluster development is not allowed in the shoreline zone. I can't, I can't think of one that exists in town. Other than, you know, the lots that predate, that have lots of right.
Right, right. So the new plan will be from scratch when they come in, review.
Start with the files.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's okay.
All in favor? Thank you.